All right, let's get started. I want to reconvene the meeting.
Wait, did you hear this thing? But the recording is it?
You're working from a graphic collective in Russia online. All right, let's move on with our testimony. I know we have a lot of people signed up to testify. I'm going to ask that we try and keep a time limit on your testimony. All right, our next testifier, if you can call out, Chivo Ching-Johnston.
Hello. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you all for showing up in support of Akaku. I will be brief. Everybody that has spoken previously and that will yet speak, I'm sure, will touch on the same bullet points. But the points that I would very much like to make is I have been at Akaku for a lot of years. And we have rarely seen much support from the DCCA. And as Jay mentioned, you guys are great people. It's just that the department that you are in charge of does not seem to be transparent at all. And it seems as though the marching orders are coming from the billion-dollar corporation. It has become the Department of Commerce and Corporate Affairs. And no commerce about it. And every year, we have to comb through the bills in the legislature because a lot of our senators and a lot of our House representatives are given donations from Spectrum. And I'm sure they're not, you know, taking that money in exchange for favors. But, I mean, maybe. But still, the whole point is, we always find a bill or two that has some little thing thrown in there about, "Oh yeah, and incidentally, take a couple percent of Akaku's money." And it's like, why is this perpetual attack? And it's coming from some bad apples or players, either in the legislature or in the Spectrum organization. They make a billion dollars a year in the state of Hawaii. They make how many millions in Maui County alone? And you're telling me that whoever is in charge of the INET asked Spectrum to, "Oh, could you get some money from these poor little paupers out here on Maui County and all the other pegs so that we can do some whatever to the INET, whatever that is?" It's just really unlikely. And the fact of the matter is, they have enough damn money already. They don't need our 3%. We do. We're already running on skeleton crew. And we have to have that to operate. We have taught thousands of kupuna, thousands of students, and people from throughout the community that want to learn these skills. And we go out and cover meetings. We do everything we possibly can to respond and give our community a voice. And we think that's important. And we don't want to get rid of that because Spectrum doesn't make enough. So they want, what, a billion and $30 or something? It's like, very highly unlikely that they need this money. And I would just like to ask you to please, as a number of folks have said, think about what you're being told and tell Spectrum no. And that's all. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Lips and I'm the artistic half of the Maui Institute for Art and Technology. And one of the things I'd like to just say is from a nonprofit standpoint, which I'm on the Board of Art Maui, and I've been very involved with artistic community here, which Maui has been extremely well-recognized on a global basis for its arts and culture. And nonprofits need this. We need to be able to have a voice. We need to be able to promote and present the various things that we're doing to give our nonprofits a voice in the community, to assist people in understanding how important it is to be involved. And this is like our town center. This is kind of a place Akaku supports the ability for people to gather and learn. And the impact of that, the influence that that has on nonprofits such as the one that I sit on, as well as others, is immense. It teaches people what's essential in communication. It teaches people what goes into creating information that is understandable for the public. There are skilled people. There are resources here. These are so important. This is, you know, we're dealing with a situation where Maui has, we have such unique resources. That's why people come here. That's why they visit. That's why they live here. And part of what makes a specialist how unique we are, not a homogenized version of America. We are Hawaii, and Maui in particular, needs, especially after all the loss we've experienced recently. I mean, we've gone through so much, and then the fire is just, I mean, that just takes us down, to our bare essentials and real estate and, you know, services such as what Akaku provides. These resources are a rich place for healthy interaction for our community. Now, I want you to understand and just kind of think for a moment what it would be like to be in a place that did not have these kind of resources. People are going to be shuttered more and more. They don't have the real estate. It's too expensive. You try and go out there and rent a property to do anything on a commercial basis or on a community support basis, it's out of reach for most people. And it's extremely competitive right now because there just aren't the resources. We need to rebuild. So I want to also present one other thought, and that is, if Spectrum is actually providing all these wonderful resources for people, what are the optics going to look like when they take a devastated community like Maui is presently? And they pull funding? It's not going to look real good. Anyhow, I thank you all for the amazing testimonies that you've given because it speaks to my heart and I feel that the people who have presented have deep knowledge about what we're facing. And I want to thank you so much for being able to hear what we have to say. Thank you.
Paul James Brown?
Aloha. I'm Paul James Brown. I've been reviewing the great art and artists on Maui since 1999. First with the Maui News, then Maui Weekly, and then Maui TV News, and since 2015 with Maui Community Television Akaku. We are an essential voice of Maui that is being seriously threatened by an invasive korene beast that according to its sharements is, quote, "the highlighted pay-TV strap and the most viewed streaming quote." Spectrum revenue in 2023 was $54 billion. That's billion with a B. And the EBITDA, that's earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and amortization, was $21 billion. This franchise renewal, if without the recommended changes, would irrevocable Akaku, which has already lost perhaps you or someone from DCCA would like to explain exactly what these funds are being reallocated for? All I have is, quote, "a private secret state-run internet that no one knows about," unquote. This loss not included in the franchise renewal will be devastating to Maui's people and their community. Please, don't be the Grinch who stole Maui's Christmas. Be Father Krueger and don't allow this to happen. Mahalo nui loa. Meliklikimahihaoli makahikiho.
Can I turn this into somebody?
Patty Lee?
Can't tell which one is the one. And now it's going. Yep. I'm behind the camera. Okay. I am Patty Lee. I'm one of the correspondents for the Maui Daily, also for our elections coverage at Akaku. And I have, I'm personally an actor as well and have worked on many different film and TV sets where the staff and crew are actually alum of Akaku's programs. So I can't speak of this. And I have a little poem that I'd like to share. One fine Maui Spectrum came with DCCA to take Akaku's funding away, to pay for a state INET, so they say, without a steady or even a peep, give millions of dollars for Spectrum to keep, citing an old Trump FCC rule to play cakey for a fool. Cable TV backers of the Spectrum shut down the voice of Molokai. Hannah and Leni fog our lens to keep Lahaina out of sight. Silence Daily reports. Depp are already skeleton. So a Spectrum away, there is no accounting at DCCA, except to do the
Aloha. My name is Jason Schwartz. I've been here on Maui since 1988. And I've been doing shows on Akaku since it began, pretty well. And over the years, many of the public have come up to me and are very thankful that there's an Akaku and have encouraged me. And I've done, God, thousand shows over time. And the thing that really gets me, you've heard all the testimony here today about the money and how it'll impact us. I've seen Akaku's, really their crew, go down in numbers over the years and equipment can't stay as current as they'd like to. But they struggle through it all and never, ever deliver anything less than the best and the best and the most they can do. And that really is, you know, it's been stated, but it's really clear to me that anything that will take precious revenue away from this group is a mistake. And I don't think it's really very much to give them a guarantee of that 3% for another 15 years. I remember the last hearing, 2013 or whatever it was, 14. And I can hardly believe we're back in the same place and we're fighting for the same thing, except now it's more critical. If you have the money that we lost by the loss of subscribers, this money, it yet makes another deep dent into the services that Akaku can provide the community. And I just hope you will really hear this. You know, we've heard so many people talk about the deep pockets of Spectrum and where all the money should be coming from other than us. And I think it should be really heard clearly by you guys. And thank you for overseeing what you do. But please, come from your heart and choose another person, another group internally to pay for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Don Adam James? Don James? Okay, move on to Chris, is it Dak or Deiko? Chris Deiko? Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Walt Pacheco?
Good day, everyone. I'm Walt Pacheco. I'm the Communications Coordinator for the Maui Police Department. I'm speaking today in my former role as the Communications Unit Lead under the Maui Civil Defense, Maui Emergency Management Agency's response to the fire. 16 months ago, we were working with the Fed, state, and local responders to be able to provide that response and support to the community during the fire, immediately after, and in the months that have followed to get things to where they are today. And we had nothing reaching into West Maui. We had no means of communications other than our land mobile radio and a few satellite units. With the surge of responders, we were able to get data connectivity to support the community response, to make those connections both federally through the state and with the locals, to be able to get people placed, get people funded, get things happening. And that happened primarily when Spectrum was able to deliver that data connectivity for us in the Lahaina area, specifically to the West Maui Center where the community was having their regional support. That response through the INET was critical to that operation, critical to the provision of services and the ability to get people set up to be able to continue displaced, but find them homes, find them places, make sure we had resources coming in. They were able to get connected into West Maui ahead of Hawaiian Telecom. So they were the first broadband connection into West Maui in the critical early weeks of that response. I am supportive of what they're trying to accomplish. I am here to provide that information. If there's any questions, I am available.
Thank you, sir. Um. Rebecca, you signed up, but you're not gonna. Okay. Felix Morrig? Felix? Oh, I'm sorry, Felipe. Felipe Morrig. Nope. Okay. David Yamashiro?
Hi, my name is David Yamashiro, and I'll be brief. A corporate Akaku-like program does not equal Akaku. Aloha does not equal aloha. Aloha is from the heart. Your feeling. It's just from within. And a corporate behemoth cannot duplicate what Akaku does. Malo.
Thank you. Carl Rosicky? Carl?
Aloha.
Aloha.
My name is Carl Rosicky, and I have been a resident of Maui for the past 49 years. I'm an independent video producer. And over the years, I have submitted many videos to Akaku for local broadcast. These include senior exercise classes that allows local residents to exercise from their homes on a regular basis. I have submitted a video series showing volunteers gathering water samples for ocean water quality monitoring Maui's beaches. I've also submitted videos highlighting local artists and musicians. And when the fire and wind devastated my neighborhood in Kula, I produced a video about the volunteers who came from all over the world to help us recover. These videos highlight the value of community television and in Akaku in particular because they give a voice to the local community. And in the, these meetings were broadcast, recorded, and archived so people would have continued access to the information that was provided at these meetings. This community service underscores the value that is provided to the people of Maui by public television and Akaku. If funding for public television and Akaku is slashed, community service and community voices will also be slashed. It is extremely important that full funding continues to support community television so it can provide the service that local residents deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Imada?
Hi, my name is Lee Imada. I'm Executive Assistant at Maui Economic Opportunity, one of the larger nonprofits in Maui County. Akaku has been a valuable and important partner in disseminating information to the community. We ran a weekly segment, the EMO Minute, on the Maui Daily News Program for almost two years, with EMO staff and directors talking about the programs and activities available to those in need in Maui County. Akaku assisted EMO in producing in cooperation with the Maui County Department of Transportation, Kaunoa Senior Services, and Na'ho Aloha to produce a video about transportation services available in Maui County. EMO operates the Maui Bus Paratransit System and Maui County's Human Services Specialized Service that provides rides for residents to jobs, health appointments, shopping, events, and excursions across the three major islands of Maui County. In addition to producing the video, Akaku has aired the video numerous times. And like EMO, which operates on the mantra, "Give a man a fish and you feed him for a day; teach a man to fish and you can feed him for a lifetime," Akaku has done the same for EMO. Gina Miller put on a four-session Kulianna Correspondence Course, teaching nonprofits how to produce their own videos using their iPhones and iMovie. We were allowed to borrow equipment, shoot, and make our own videos, which were aired on Akaku. We were troubled to learn of the proposed 15-year cable TV franchise renewal for Spectrum. Akaku says the proposal will divert nearly 20% of Akaku's franchise-free revenue on top of revenues already lost due to the tragic destruction of our beloved Lahaina. There is a major problem with transparency. I went hunting on the DCCA website for the proposal and could not find it. That may be because I'm not an expert in navigating the DCCA website, but the limited publicity and the changing venues definitely thwart public participation in the process. True or not, this process has a feel of government and a powerful entity writing rules for their benefit without adequate public review. Also, this plan is based on proposals submitted seven or eight years ago. Reading the Kauai Agreement, the DCCA news release cites a 2017 public hearing as basis for its decision. Much has occurred since then, and another public hearing with full vetting of the changes needs to be scheduled. Keep the status quo. There is no need for change. Thank you for allowing EMO to comment.
Thank you. Jean Zorro? Sorry.
Thank you for allowing me to testify. My name is Jean Zorro. I've been on the Akaku Board a long time, and I've been the Chairperson of the Akaku Board a little less than a long time, but it's been a while. So I have a couple things to say. And I want to start off with the litany of accomplishments that we were told by the representative from Spectrum in the beginning about all the great things they're doing. And it really doesn't mean much to me because because I feel that should be described as the care and feeding of the golden goose. Okay? Because of the fifty million-plus dollars they draw off Maui County... And I did a little math, and I ran out of decimal points. And they also said they gave five hundred thousand dollars since 2017 to local nonprofits. Right? So if you take that fifty million and you divide the five hundred thousand by the seven years, I'm at zero, zero, zero something of a donation on an annual basis. So in other words, one quarter of one percent is still more than the seventy thousand they do give to the nonprofits. So it's appreciated. You know, it's better than nothing, but it's not what I would call a great sacrifice. What I would also like to say is, you know, when a pole falls for Maui Electric, they go out and pick it up and get the electric turned on for the neighborhood. That's because they're a utility, and they're allowed to do business based on their appreciation of being a utility, something the community needs, right? Spectrum is no longer a luxury. They are a utility. So when something goes wrong in Lahaina and they have to go out and fix the fiber optic, that is their job. And it should have been done quicker, faster, better in the first place. You know? But that is their job. The second thing I have an issue with is the DCCA. I was always under the understanding that you stood up for the people of the state of Hawaii. And that doesn't seem to be the case. Okay? You seem to not be standing up for us because I was at that hearing ten years ago. So I'm amazed at two things. One, we're not even counting for the inflation that's taken place. We're willing to take the three percent over fifteen more years of inflation. Okay? When it should be actually adjusted. Okay? However, if the DCCA is not going to protect the people of Hawaii and in particular Maui County, you should tell us that. Okay? Tell us. Say, "We're not going to protect you. We have other people more important." And then we will take it to other areas of due process, whether it's the courts, whether it's the legislators. But you should tell us because we're under the assumption you work for us. And that doesn't seem to be the case right now. And the last thing, on a positive note, although that was positive to me. I'm also one of the founders of Keiki Charter School, and I can't tell you how many of our students have gone through Akaku's educational experience. A couple of our alumni work for Akaku. And it is so important that these young people that have a passion for what Akaku provides, and they have to rule it in or rule it out. And what I mean is, they go there for internships and programs, and they kind of figure out if this is what they really want to do. And sometimes they do, and sometimes they go other ways. But the service that Akaku provides at that point is vital to the future. None of us are getting any younger. I mean, you know, it's been an honor to work with Jay, you know, all these years. But he's not getting any younger. But one thing I have to say about Jay real quick, when he talks, people listen. Not just here, nationally. He's a nationally recognized expert on this industry. And when he talks, people listen, and he's our leader. And I agree with everything he says. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Blackburn Rodriguez?
Hello. My name is Tom Blackburn Rodriguez, and I'll be testifying as an individual. Just as a point of information, my family has been in Hawaii since 1870, so we have strong opinions about this island. I urge the DCCA to reevaluate the Maui County Proposed Cable Renewal Plan and those changes that are in that plan and to engage in a more open and comprehensive community consultation process. I am strongly opposed to the current proposed renewal plan. A new community ascertainment study is critical to accurately reflect the current needs and interests of our community, ensuring that any renewed franchise aligns with these needs rather than undermines them. I ask you this. Can you imagine New York City without Central Park? Can you imagine Boston without Boston Commons? These public spaces where people come together? Can you imagine Maui without Akaku? A new community ascertainment study is critical to the program we are now talking about. Moreover, Maui deserves a written guarantee within the franchise renewal agreement that reinstates Akaku's legacy funding of three percent of gross cable revenue for the duration of the franchise period. It is no secret to this body that the Maui media universe is rapidly changing. For some of this, this has brought an increase in access to knowledge and economic opportunities with internet business ventures. Eighty percent of small businesses have at least a basic e-commerce site and use to drive sales and expand customer contact, says a new survey of five hundred and forty businesses from Payments Intelligence. Another aspect of this media evolution has been to move cable TV service to the internet as a streaming business model. Spectrum is encouraging its customers to move their service to this streaming model. Why? Such a move can reduce Spectrum's use of public rights away to move product to the customers by wire and be used to unfairly justify a reduction of revenue for public service entities such as Akaku. It is unfortunate that we seem to be moving to a time when we go to marginalized communities for those with the least amount of resources in order to take resources and money to the people at the top. In other words, cut Akaku and give it to a multi-billion-dollar corporation. This evolution is occurring in the middle of what we may, what many have called, a media desert on Maui. Newspapers on Maui have disappeared or severely cut back the quantity and quality of their coverage with many outlets content to print editorials from other newspapers and to cover and to overrely on canned coverage from the Associated Press. With one or two exceptions, Maui Radio is a mainland mix of pre-recorded fake DJ chatter and aging rock and roll songs. News is an afterthought, including community, local, national, and international. T V stations are Oahu-centric and rarely provide Maui-based news stories, the sad exception being the Lahaina and Kula wildfires. Too many rural locations on Maui still do not have internet access, a critical response for obtaining a 21st century education. Only Akaku Community TV provides 24/7 local news coverage, news programs, documentary programs, and art and music productions with local talent. In an emergency, Akaku is known as the place to go for trusted and vetted information. It played a critical role providing fire information, broadcast of public meetings, and critical fire survival and recovery information. Rather than taking a ten-year-old cable plan that ignores the financial impact and estimated $100,000 of the hundreds of viewers lost to Akaku as a result of homes and businesses going up in smoke, instead, Akaku should get a reward for their tireless work and at the very least be guaranteed its current level of funding so that we do not have service cutbacks, a reduction in Molokai cable coverage, reduced election coverage, and a reduction in Maui County Council Commission and board meeting broadcasts due to reduced funds.
I'll ask you to summarize, please.
I will now summarize. They should not be faced with a budget shortfall of three million over fifteen years annually or twenty percent of Akaku's revenue to fund a secret Spectrum state-run internet program. Spectrum does not need the money. It only receives approximately $100 billion annually from doing business in Hawaii. Please put this plan under closer scrutiny. Do it right now so we don't have to suffer the consequences of a bad plan that may wind up having to be done over. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is George Burnett, followed by Ludwig Lob. George Burnett?
My name is George Burnett, and I'm a big fan of Akaku. And I hadn't planned on saying this. If the lady from Spectrum is still here, I wanted to point out, I moved here in 2013, and my cable, telephone, and internet bill was about $160 then. And today, it's about $240 for the same service. So I'm not particularly a big fan of Spectrum. And probably the only reason I'm still subscribing to the cable is so I can watch Akaku, which I do pretty much every day. So... I hadn't planned on saying anything, and I wrote some notes. And at my age, even with glasses, I can hardly read my own notes. So... I retired in 2016 and became very interested in local issues for the first time in my life. And it's been a very rewarding experience. One of the first things I did, I went to an event on Akaku upstairs, which they have just about every month with different speakers. And I'd gone to a couple of those meetings. And one of those meetings, I met a gentleman sitting right over here named Sleepy John, who was... He was the director of a TV show there. And I said, "John, I've always wanted to see how TV works. Can I come to watch your show?" And the next thing I knew, I was a volunteer there. And I've been a volunteer for the recurring TV shows there. And it's been a great pleasure for all of you here on the Akaku staff. I love all of you guys. Probably most of what I've learned about the issues in Maui County has been from Akaku, from working these shows. It's just been a fabulous experience. The crews there are marvelous. They're very short-staffed. I suspect they're probably underpaid. And I just have learned so much from working there. I took some of the classes they offered there. Took a class from you, Chivo. We learned how to present ourselves in the video like Austin was talking about. And our graduation was, we went down to the market here on Saturday, and you had us pick out a vendor, and we had to interview the vendor and make a show about their products and put that on Akaku. And I learned that from Chivo, who's on camera back here. And that was fabulous. And then another thing I learned, took a class on Final Cut Pro, which is video editing software. And from that, I've learned how to make my own videos even better and more professionally. And I've probably made, I don't know, thirty videos since then. Number of videos made, I'm very proud of. I made a twenty-minute video of a little church here in Waileku, Kaka Mono Church, which I'm a member of. It's one of the original Hawaiian churches here, and I'm a member. And they were celebrating their 185th anniversary, and I was able to make a documentary about that church. You know, it's not a professional like PBS, but I was very proud of it. And I don't know, we put that on Akaku to advertise their 185th anniversary. And I don't know how something like that would have been possible without Akaku. Another thing I'm very proud of, I see my friend Clara Kana, Clara Pana back here. I'm very honored to call Clara my friend. She invited me to make a video. A gentleman from one of the tribes in North Dakota came to visit Clara and to help her, Clara was trying to post some of the digging up of the Evi Kapuna, some of the bones down in Wailea. And Clara asked me to make a video, which I did. And I put it on Akaku and YouTube. I think it's one of my most-watched videos that I'm very proud of. None of that would have been possible without Akaku. Am I... You want me to cut?
Yes, okay. Sorry, please.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna have to cut out. I watch the Maui Daily Report. I used to be the Maui Daily every day. That's how I get my news. The news on that show, you're not gonna see on the network, the local news shows on the network. It's very tailored to the people of Maui. I don't know what we would do without that. Akaku covers our county council, every meeting of the council, where it runs day and night. I'm very interested in what our council does, and I watch that all the time. How... It's just something we're not gonna replace if you're gonna cut that out. They cover so many other things. The election debates, if you're interested in who's running for office, who are you gonna vote for? How are you gonna find out about these people? It's because it's on Akaku and really nowhere else. And the election coverage they did, was honored to be a volunteer on their election coverage team. And I wish you could see it. It's four hours of live TV. It's done so professionally, start to finish, and just to see it. If you could see that, there's no way you would cut funding for this organization. And last thing I wanted to say, I haven't been involved with this, but Cat Tracy runs these youth programs. They're fabulous. They're training our media leaders of the future. If that's the only thing Akaku did, they would be more than worth the money that you give them. So... Well, I had more, but like I say, please don't cut Akaku. It's not the right thing to do. I think you know that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ludwig Lob, followed by Janice Hill.
I'm Ludwig Lob. Why are we here? We're here because a greedy corporation wants to take money from moist community media. Twenty-five thou... Two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand every year. It is a pittance for Spectrum, but lifeblood for the community media. It seems to me that your mind is made up, and Spectrum will get its way. Department of Consumer Protection, whom are you protecting? The consumer or a greedy corporation? Does Spectrum pay you? I hope you change your mind, and if not, I hope this ends up in court so that hypocrisy and corruption will be exposed. If my assumption is correct, then shame on you. Shame on you, DCCA.
All right, thank you. Janice Hill? Followed by Mike Hill.
Aloha, winala. My name is Janice Hill. I have been a Maui resident for fifty-five years. I moved here to teach. I relied on Akaku heavily during the Lahaina fire and Kula fires aftermath. I was grateful to have a Maui station to turn to as a resource. I appreciate Channel Fifty-Three. I appreciate Channel Fifty-Three when I watch live coverage of the Maui County Council meetings or the planning commission meetings. I also watch their election coverage. In this age of misinformation and lack of access to the truth, I appreciate the access to democracy now on AkaKu. My husband and I hosted a young man from the country of Bhutan eight years ago, and Dana Fulton, the program director graciously aired his Kanoa Senior Center presentation about his faraway nation on AkaKu. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, I was a teacher and an elective I had at Lohulani Intermediate was teaching them how to put on a TV show for the school, and we went after school on a field trip to AkaKu, and these kids got to see how to run a TV show and do the real thing. Spectrum is making millions of monies on their consumers. Please don't restrict our freedom of speech, allow independent, equitable access. Fund AkaKu so that they can do more, not less, community programming. Give them full funding and the high definition they deserve, free of cost. Omaukeea o kaenei kapono. Mahalo.
Thank you. Mahalo. Okay, Mike Hill followed by Dr. Valerie Simonsen.
My name is Michael Hill and I've lived on Maui for a little over thirty years. It'd be pretty hard to add anything new to the testimony that's already been given, but I just wanted to go on the record to say that cutting any funding for AkaKu would be a terrible disservice to our community. On the one side, you have a, an organization that is providing truly local information to the members of our community, and on the other side, you have a multi-billion-dollar corporation that wants to franchise to do, continue to do business for the next fifteen years here on Maui, and it's pretty hard for me to imagine that they're all of a sudden going to change their mind and say, "If we have to continue to fund AkaKu, we're gonna change our mind and give the franchise to somebody else." I think that it would be a great travesty to cut any funding from AkaKu, and so that's really all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Valerie Simonsen? Followed by Suzie Gasterresi. I'm sorry.
Aloha. I'm here leaning on the past, those that went before me. Thank you, Uncle, for letting me share your stick today. But I live for the future. I live for the keiki. I live for the land, the water, the people not only here in Hawaii but everywhere in the world. I have served this island for over forty years as a physician, and AkaKu was one of our first landing places for the first television show where we introduced integrative medicine, which now is standard of practice in the world. So thank you, AkaKu. It's called The Doctor's Inn. I have done forty years of crisis relief work all over the world, and when eight, eight happened, I was up-country, I couldn't get to the west side because of the rules. My truck landed in the driveway of AkaKu, and I walked in there, and there was Chivo, and there was the radio guy, and within minutes, maybe thirty at the most, I was teaching, I was showing people what they could do in their homes to take care of this incredible stress that they were undergoing. I continue to do that. I also went to the west side and served for months, still do. But I'm not here to talk about what I've done, what I'm here to talk about is genocide. Genocide. They've taken away the lands, they've taken away the... Support this application because I see it as a form of genocide, and I support AkaKu and all that they do to keep on bringing hope to this land. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, Suzie, do you have a Suzie? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Followed by Ellen Lovinski. Lovinski, yeah.
Aloha, thank you for letting us be here, to hear us, and thank you for everyone for responding to the call. So I want to ask if you know what is being said on the air at AkaKu. What we say often and what we repeat is, this is how we stay connected, and I think that's what's important. Today we're here in unity because we are connected, because it takes much more than a handful of employees to create AkaKu. We are the mirror of the county, we have stories to share, not only ourselves but our volunteers, the contributors, people who have learned to create our videos, segments, stories to share with the rest of the community. So it's beautiful to have this team, not of people who are under the roof at AkaKu, but those who come and go, participate in the election, who submit stories, information, and they don't do it simply because it's fun to learn to do videos and to tell stories, they also do it because they feel it's their kuliana. I live in La Jolla, the blaze came a few meters from my home, and I can say that for many hours, it was really, really strange not to be able to communicate with the outside world in any way. So this should never happen again in the future. What has happened in the past was that AkaKu did a fantastic job. What's happening now, AkaKu with the rest of all of you is doing a great job, and AkaKu is yet to do more with your help, if you hear us today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Lovinski followed by Rosalyn Monduka.
Hi, I'm Ellen Lovinski. I'm just amazed at all the people that have come to testify because, you know, I'm Maui, how difficult it is to get people to come to things, but this is just so important to us, significant. I want to address a few things that the woman who spoke first said, and I'm gonna quote her, what I wrote down, that every customer should have reliable internet service, and that Spectrum provides programming that the customers want when they want it, and Spectrum is dedicated to giving back to the community we serve. So here's the community of Maui, and we're saying how you should be serving us. I've lived on Maui, I've been blessed to be on Maui since nineteen seventy-nine, and doubly blessed to have lived in Lahaina for thirty-six years. So put me on the list of Lahaina Spectrum customers that don't happen anymore because I'm living someplace else. And I want to say, in September, the month after the fire, I got a bill from Spectrum for my cable service, so I had to call them up and say, "My house burned, I cancel my bill," and they did. Thank you. So one of the things we want, reliable internet service, we want HDTV so we don't have fuzzy pictures, and doesn't everybody else have HDTV in other states? Why not through AkaKu? I went to the meeting in twenty thirteen here at the college, and I want to thank the college for this nice air-conditioned room, because we were in a room upstairs that wasn't air-conditioned, and the DCCA said the meeting was from a certain time to another time. I didn't get to testify and other people didn't because at the time limit cutoff, they said, "It's the end of the meeting, you can send in written testimony." So that was pretty disappointing. AkaKu is invaluable to, because it keeps our Maui county community connected with each other, which is the island of Maui, the island of Molokai, and also Lanai. Because here on Maui, a lot of times we feel isolated from Bigwahu, where everything's happening, and so Molokai and Lanai probably feel even more isolated. I want to thank Daniel Imhoff because he does the Photo Friday, and he has put on many pictures I've sent and other people, and it's just a great thing to see what's going on in our county. I also want to thank Rick for all the sports things that are happening on Molokai, right? Especially like the women's sports. I taught children's art for twenty years, and I know how empowering it is for kids to see what they're doing out in the public, and for those kids on the outer islands to see themselves, and for the kids on Maui to see what's going on on the other island, as well as sometimes the sports teams go to other islands to compete. As far as the three percent from Spectrum, which is legacy funding, so in twenty thirteen, and as Jay said, forever we've been getting three percent, I think AkaKu should be getting five percent. The prices of everything is going up, especially electricity, not to mention people's personal expenses for housing, food, stuff for their kids, clothes, and we know next year, the prices of a lot of stuff is gonna go up even more. So why shouldn't the AkaKu income go up to keep them viable? My partner, Ken Holquist, was a producer with AkaKu for about ten years, and he covered county planning commission meetings, cultural resource commission meetings, and a few other meetings, which is great, because most people don't have the time to be able to go to the county buildings to these meetings. They work, they have kids, sometimes the meetings are in odd times, plus we know the county meetings will go on for four or five more hours, so isn't it nice to be able to turn the TV on and watch it, and you can go into the kitchen, get something to eat when it's a bit boring, and come back and see what's going on, and then that enables our community to be able to provide written testimony on the subjects that they're interested in.
Can I ask you to summarize, please?
Oh, okay, all right. So I support what Jay had in his letter, his three requests, although I want to say increase that funding to five percent, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Rosalyn Monduka followed by Waynet Apo.
Hello. My name is Rosalind Monduka. I am a university-level teacher, performing artist, and independent producer. I have studied through community television with top ward national documentary producers that were commissioned by community television. I would like to say to our elected government officials, to the director of the DCCA, and to the honorable Josh Green, governor whom I voted for, we, the community of Maui, your constituents, do not want this monopoly takeover from Spectrum. We do not want the defunding of AkaKu. We want AkaKu funded. We are telling you now, and there are many thousands of people who are not present at this meeting, who do not want the monopoly of Spectrum to take over the funding that AkaKu deserves. I have been a member of AkaKu in the thirty-five years I've been here. I did study in AkaKu and received producer status. There are many educational programs, public service announcements, arts and entertainment, emergency services, cultural Hawaiian programs that we would never, ever see on the regular broadcast channels that AkaKu has provided for us. I want every one of you to go home, when you go home, and call Josh Green. Jay Avro said that Josh Green could change this with a phone call, so let's everyone go home and make a phone call and make several repeated phone calls. I'm a, I am a Spectrum customer, I constantly am changing channels because I can't find practically anything to watch, and often, even on a daily basis, I will refer to AkaKu for my community updates, local news. And I want everyone to realize that they do have a voice, and to make those phone calls. We need our AkaKu. We have people who are in the community who have no voice, and AkaKu has given them the voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Waynet Apo? Followed by Walter Kanem.
Hi. Hi, I'm Waynet K W Apo, A P O, Alpha Papa Omega. I'm new here. I watch AkaKu every day and night, and I enjoy it. I can watch it over and over again, and enjoy it. And at times, what's with that name is Maui County Council, and the day... The Daily Report, Chivo Team, Johnson, yeah, like that, and Patty, the, yeah, and... Sometimes I miss out on things, what has been said, so I go back and watch it, pick up things that I missed, so now I understand it has, what has been, and I catch on. I have my, I have a, the Maui County Mayor is my cousin. Richie Rich, by saying, the buffalo canoe has landed on the sand. Yeah, I, and AkaKu, I laugh a lot, when I go back and watch things from the Maui County Council, what Chivo Team, I crack them, laughing, I, I catch on things, you know, and sometimes I catch on what they're saying, eh, good fun, I tell you, I crack them, and this can be earlier than what I mean, to begin, and get on and watching the AkaKu, yeah, Maui County Council, yeah, and, yeah. My son is, I met him, okay? I met him since nineteen, after high school, I got into an accident when I was nineteen seventy-four, I was freshly born in high school, anyway, and, I got, I came to him, you know, for my accident in nineteen seventy-eight, seventy, the summer of nineteen seventy-seven or seventy-eight, yeah, when I'm great, anyway, and then, my son, Ilaja Pa'oka'ani, letters Apo, A P O, Ilaja is Jehovah God, yeah, Jehovah God, Ilaja, Pa'oka'ani, Pa'... Pa' Okalani, Pa' Touch, Okalani, Pa' of Touch of the Heaven, Pa' Touch, Pa' of Touch. O of Kalani, Pa' Da Lani, Heaven, Touch of the Heaven, Touch of the Heaven. Leros, Des, Jehovah Gods, Mighty They're the Lamb, Christ Jesus, Apo, Alpha Papa Omega, Des, Jehovah God, the Alpha and the Omega, the first and the last, Alpha Papa Omega. Okay, and then, um, Jehovah God, yeah, he hears our prayers, yeah, so, pray, yeah.
Thank you. Walter, Walter Kanan, followed by Michael Doberestein. Kanam, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I gotta follow that. That was the light? Oh. Hmm. Dig it to the point. While I am here to address you and you, I would also like to read a letter that I wrote. This letter is to someone who advocates free speech, and he also said, "If you control by censorship, you will be held accountable." Mr. Elon Musk, Tesla Incorporated, 3500 Deer Creek Road, Palo Alto, California. Aloha, Mr. Musk. Congratulations in your appointment to the Department of Government Efficiency. I believe that your lifetime of accomplishments is proof that you get things done. I have viewed your documentaries, and I agree with you. Everyone deserves a second chance to make a positive change in their lives. Communication, proper training, and guidance are keys to success. Mahalo, Elon. The reason I am writing to you has to do with the state of Hawaii and the DCCA, Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. We are the only state with the DCCA. Why is that? The mission and goal of DCCA, as stated by the state of Hawaii verbatim. DCCA's goals are to promote a strong, healthy business environment while protecting the community from unfair and deceptive business practices. Is the fox in the hen house? Kauai got defunded, who's next? The DCCA will be holding a last-minute public hearing on December 9 at 11:00 a.m. at UH Maui campus. The plan is to divert $225,000 of Akaku Maui community media revenue to Spectrum every year to fund a private, secret, state-run internet. This is not the first attempt, it's been tried before. This is in addition to $100,000 in annual subscriber revenue that was lost permanently in the Maui fires. Since 2016, I have submitted eight documentaries to Akaku Public Broadcasting on the island of Maui. Every one of them was shown on Akaku Primetime TV. The first video was 16 minutes and took my granddaughter and I approximately 300 hours to edit. It required going to the island of Kauai with Paul Anara, by boat, staying there for three days, interviewing workers, filming crew at work, taking photos and videos of the island, and a lot of research. The video was created for the International Union of Conservation and Nature. The price tag, free. My last documentary is two minutes, short and sweet, sometimes less is more. The price tag, free. All eight documentaries were to educate people. I believe in free speech. Akaku Public Broadcasting affords me and many others the time to educate the public on issues that are not seen or heard of through commercial public television.
If you summarize, please.
Okay. Something is not right, who is behind this scheme, and what is the reason? We are not unaware of deception currently taking place. Why are you doing this? Politics, power, money, or control? Or all of the above? If you shut down Akaku, you have no voice. Are you trying to shut me up? As long as I have breath, the truth will prevail, one way or another. Nor than ever, our stories have to be told, free public broadcasting. I will be testifying on Monday, and I hope you can help our much-needed effort. Please view my thoughts on YouTube. Walter Kanamu, mahalo nui roa.
Thank you. Michael Doberestein, followed by Brian Motto.
Michael J. Doberestein, 34, Eliwai Loo, in Kihei. Uma keia, a ka, a kaina, ka pono. Mahalo for holding this critical session. I first came to Maui in 1982, and I moved to South Maui in 2005, retiring after serving 25 years as the Director of Research for the NFL Players Association of the AFL-CIO. I've been a public board member of Akaku since 2007, and have served as a board officer. I strongly concur with the testimony of our CEO, Jay Avro, and others who are talking about the technical and administrative side aspects of this hearing. Well, you know, the New York Times, it boasts all the news that's fit to print. Well, Akaku's better. We air everything and anything. The Washington Post...
Akaku is vital compared to other broadcasting systems. This past weekend, I learned that a nationally well-known journalist, who has spent many years delving into the strange and bizarre comings of Tulsi Gabbard, attempted to deal with Hawaii News Now, talking about Ms. Gabbard. To say that she was rudely rebuffed is putting it very mildly, and I have in my hand what actually happened. But that's not really the point. We at Akaku would never treat anyone with such disrespect. Indeed, I've requested that she send me the material in question, and if she sends it back, I will make it a point to have it broadcast on Akaku. Now, don't be upset or shocked at that. I was a top-level congressional aide for a decade, from 1967 to 1976, and dealt with valuable and sensitive information at this level before. Given Ms. Gabbard's nomination to head this nation's intelligence service, there remain many questions about her relationships with the deposed Assad regime and with Russian contacts. Now, if the New York Times, Washington Post, and HNN fail to offer the public this information, Akaku can and will. You have the authority to assure Akaku and other Hawaii PEG systems not only be maintained at this level, but to become even better. Now, I was on the board when Jay described the chaos that our board had, that we had members of the board of Akaku who didn't like Akaku. We had meetings that lasted six hours. Uh, but, well, let me, I have just one more minute here. This isn't the only meeting, I mean, there was a meeting in 2012 as well, at the Cameron Center, where many people from Maui came and testified about how good Akaku is. And finally, Spectrum. Well, Oceanic Time Warner is, was, and is by far, the worst provider of cable services in this country. Spectrum is one level up. They're the second-worst provider nationally of services to the cable community. We're not getting anything great. We can do a lot better, and you can help us. Mahalo, malama pono.
Thank you. Brian Motto. Mark Heimis.
Would it be all right if I sit?
Um, yeah. Well, we're gonna move that one over. Sorry, my back's a little...
Good afternoon. I represent the Hawaii Department of Education. We're also one of the kind of more quiet beneficiaries of the PEG funding. Um, so I'm the Television Production Crew Chief, or like I said, for Maui District, for the Hawaii Department of Education.
Please try to speak on...
Get a little closer here. Is that better? Anyways, along with UH Maui, we represent one half of the local accredited PEG channels within Maui County. I believe there are six PEG channels within Maui County, and three of them are educational. We serve approximately 30 schools and thousands of students across Maui, Molokai, and Lanai. For reference, our relationship with Akaku is much akin to the relationship between Olalo Community Television and the Hawaii Department of Education on Oahu. Okay? Today I have two primary concerns. The first is about the portion of the franchise renewal dealing with the PEG funding. I find the franchise agreement language whereby the cable provider could begin charging the PEG facilities for services rather concerning. Up until now, such services have been included free of charge as part of the franchise agreement. As you know, the PEG fees paid to Spectrum are in return for public rights of way. Our channel receives 12.5% of the PEG fees for Maui County in order to equip and staff our educational channel. With these funds, we pay three salaries, equip our team with basic tools, and additionally, the funds are used to equip, for equipment to keep the channel up and running. So, just as our counterparts in the Hawaii Department of Education do on Oahu, our employees create local content in the form of educational programs in various academic subjects. They also provide local school event coverage and stories showcasing the great learning and teaching happening in our schools. Any major cut into the 12.5% funding that we get would likely require a cut in staff and reduce our ability to provide the aforementioned services to the students and families of Maui County. My second concern is in regard to the PEG channels not being supported with high-definition channels. It has been brought to my attention that Spectrum's local competitor is offering HD-quality channels without any additional fees to the PEG providers. High definition has been standard for decades now, and currently, we actually have to downgrade our signal before we broadcast. I would think that Spectrum would want to offer the same services as their competitor and provide the community with HD PEG channels at no extra cost to the PEG providers, and I would hope that the community would demand the signal quality of any entity seeking a franchise in our community. In conclusion, any cut in PEG funding or fees for maintenance would be devastating to Maui County's PEG providers. Maui deserves a written guarantee within the franchise renewal agreement that guarantees PEG funding of 3% of gross cable revenue for the duration of the franchise period. As mentioned in other testimonies, all of our PEG channels provide valuable local resources and a voice to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marty James Barjwa, followed by Jennifer Claudio. Marty James. Okay, Jennifer Claudio. Good afternoon.
I'm a local entertainer here on Maui known as Tana Makolibri, and I've been fortunate enough to be a beneficiary of Akaku and their services through their PSAs and also professional filming of live performances. Their contribution to artists is invaluable. Um, as, you know, I don't know, if you're not an artist, you don't know how much it can cost to have these services and pay for them on your own independently, and they were able to provide this to me free of charge. Everyone on their staff is amazing, very kind, and, um, and also like to circle back there. I'll give you an example that with, um, my brother here, where'd he go? Not Ashton, what's his name? Asher? Austin. Austin, I hired Austin to film a couple of my shows, and it was at a very low fee, and if it wasn't for his education through Akaku, I would not have been able to hire someone at, at a fee that I could afford as an independent artist. And lastly, one of my biggest concerns for cutting the funds for Akaku is we are planning to create a show alongside Suzie and other producers that literally have to volunteer their time in order to produce these shows, so they're not getting paid to put these shows together, so I can't imagine what would be left for them if funds were cut. You know, they're already doing everything that they can with the small crew that they run with, and any, any dollar amount short of what... run with, and any dollar amount short of what they already receive would, I'm sure, would harm them beyond measure. So, thank you, and I hope that you continue to support Akaku and give them the three percent that they're asking for and give them HD without any charge.
Thank you. Miley Masada, followed by Gordon Keihahuna. Keihahuna. Miley?
Yes. Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Miley Masada, the Director of Operations for the Oskie Rice Event Center, which is a 214-acre parcel up in Makua, solely owned and operated by Kauna Olu Branch, which was established in 1916, over 100 years ago. In 2021, we hosted the first public event post-COVID, and through our partnership with Akaku, we were able to bring this event into the homes of many, many families. Our event had high expectations, a lot of restrictions, and a big demand. So unfortunately, we were not able to host all of the people that wanted to attend, but through our partnership with Akaku, we were able to bring it into these households. Obviously, we all know what happened in August of 2023. Again, our facility was asked to host as an emergency response shelter for livestock. We took in our first trailer loads approximately two o'clock in the morning on the day of the fires. We then morphed into a distribution center. We also morphed into an emergency response and relaxation center for our first responders. And then we morphed again to an essential and food hub distribution, serving over 19,000 meals over a period of time for families directly impacted with the fires in Lahaina and our up-country families that were hosting some of their ohana from Lahaina or who themselves have suffered. Again, through our partnership with Akaku, they brought our story and what happened in up-country to the forefront, which allowed so much people to understand the significant impact that Maui was going through. In closing, I'd just like to say that without Akaku and their staff, their team of dedicated people, a lot of our stories would not be real. People would be misled or misunderstood, you know, misinterpreted as to what was happening. The staff at Akaku takes time to get the real story. They come and talk to the real people, the unsung heroes. They see for themselves and portray what is actually happening. I ask that in closing, whoever needs to make the decision that needs to be made, make it with consideration of real people who are out there. Obviously, I had no idea what I was coming to today, but after hearing so much testimonial, I'm so politically disconnected. I don't know anything about INET, HINET, NO NET, whatever net, but I do know that the team at Akaku are real. We need them, our community needs them, and I just ask that whoever needs to make the decision, I know a decision needs to be made, please be considerate of what this team does. Mahalo.
Gordon Keihahuna. Gordon? Tasha Church. Followed by Joff Yamaguchi.
This one's for the television pass-through. This is for the room.
This is the thing you can do on screen. It's important to talk to both of you. Thanks. Awesome. Aloha, everyone, and aloha, Deputy Director Dean. My name is Tasha Ina Church. My indigenous name is Iomote, strives for empowerment of the Stalo Nation. My mother's name is Shwaya, welcome and loved one, and I am a descendant of healers in the Stalo Nation. I come here to hopefully share something a little bit different that hasn't already been said, and I know that for a lot of people in this room, you've kind of checked out because it's been so many hours. So I thank you for your time. I thank you for your presence here. I was introduced to Akaku many years ago. I came to this island, and I will be celebrating my ten-year Maui-versary in January, and so I am so grateful for this community and the fact that it has similar indigenous roots, protecting the land, protecting the people, focused on the community. That's something that's so special about here, very individual to the island, and I'm so grateful to be a resident here. When I met Akaku, was introduced to Akaku Media Station, they were actually at a Women Helping Women event. And for those who don't know, that's for people who are dealing with domestic violence situations. I don't think that Spectrum would be going to a Women Helping Women event. I don't think that they will show up at our children's basketball games. I don't think that they will be invested in helping out when it comes to bringing a message out into the community. Something that I've been able to do with the help of Spectrum is share my voice and share my story as a survivor, but also to be able to get educated with their work surrounding videography and photography. My business is, I have two businesses, one that went completely pow during the fire, and the other one, I lost eighty percent of my revenue. And I didn't start a business so that I can make buco amounts of money. I started it because I'm passionate and I care about the community. And so when COVID happened, domestic violence went up by forty-six percent, forty-six percent, and I ended up calling up Gina Miller from Akaku Media Station and told her how sad I was, I wanted to do something. My L.A. Live Action business focuses on self-defense and empowering people and educating them, surrounding their rights and boundaries and violence prevention. And so I was so very grateful to Akaku Media Station because they allowed me to be able to share videos before the mayor's address to help the community, showing them different self-defense moves, different ways of communicating to set boundaries. And it was my way to be able to be out in the community, knowing that with COVID, I wasn't allowed to essentially leave my home. And so for me, that's just not something that I felt comfortable doing. There's so many people who needed help. And so I really appreciate the fact that they allow people's voices to be heard, people's stories to be heard. Something else for me, during the fire, I was launching a course. It wasn't something that I had intended to do, the partner conglomerate that I worked with, they were launching it, but I wasn't able to promote it because Spectrum, there was no internet. For months, I lost most likely thousands upon thousands of dollars, and when I called Spectrum to be able to ask for help when it came to the bills, they said that they could postpone it. They didn't say that they would stop it. I was actually charged continuously, and then they upped it, absolutely. So to me, I don't see them actually caring about the people. And my hope is that you will actually listen to all of the voices that have been sharing today and think about not only them, but think about you and your family. Think about what they would want. Would they want their voices to be heard? Would they want their stories to live on? That is what Akaku Media offers to the community. Spectrum does not, and so I hope that you take that into consideration. Mahalo.
Thank you. Joff Yamaguchi, followed by Livid Kalentine. Joff? Okay, Livid Kalentine. Dar? Larry Feinberg. Feinberg. Sorry.
I came back right in time. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Pretty good on TV. Hi, I'm Larry Feinberg. It's nice to see the guy from the DCCA smiling, even though he has a lot of other things besides cable on his mind. He can check on the doctors, he can check on the realtors, he can check on the lawyers, he can check on everybody that has a license in the state of Hawaii comes into your office, and they have a director and another director. I'm sorry that I came late earlier because I missed the lady from Spectrum, and all these other people have been very, 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 very nice. They all talked out of, they all wrote stuff, edited things. I'm not a nice guy. I've been dealing with the cable business for well over fifty years. I started out in New York where they had the cable access TV, and from there, I went to California, and I even was in the pay-TV business many, many, many years ago. When I left New York to go to California to be in the pay-TV business, my mother says to me, "Why are you going? We get TV for free. Who's gonna pay?" Meanwhile, HBO, Showtime, the movie channel, and all of them come across and they pay Spectrum. Spectrum makes a fortune of money. But if I got an alert the other day, Spectrum's down. I don't see on my bill, "Oh, Spectrum's down for a couple of hours." I pay for that service, and I want to direct, because everybody keeps looking over here, so I would imagine that the people from Spectrum are here, but it looks like they left. You know, I don't get a credit. You should look into that. You know, all the money that they get that they don't give back to us for the non-service that we're paying for. When you get a bill, it just doesn't say Spectrum Service. It's got four other things, five other things. They pay you, they pay this one, they pay that one, and it all comes out of our pocket. And what is that amount to? A monopoly. And who has a monopoly in the state of Hawaii? The cable company, the electric company, the telephone company? They have monopolies. We need them, but they're crushing every single person on, in the whole entire state. Now, there have been many, many, many people that have filled this room and have come up and have advocated not to take any money away from a small business like Akaku and give it to a giant monopoly as Spectrum. But this is only the tip of the iceberg. Someone outside just told me that after, we'd all testify, that there are many other people waiting online, I hope they're still there, to do a Zoom meeting and talk about this. So there's a lot of people, and they always say that you get one letter means ninety thousand letters, so many more letters, and a lot of people are interested in this, and a lot of people, it's difficult for them to maintain what they do with the percentage of the money that they get because there is no inflation. So when you go back to your office and you talk to your boss and your underlings, and you go over and you go, "Boy, I was over on Maui, there were a lot of people there that are behind Akaku," and they don't want us, the DCCA, to take the money away and give it to somebody that doesn't need the money. I could see if they needed the money, if they were gonna go broke, but they're not going broke, not, and they're going in your pocket, and in my pocket, and in his pocket, and in his pocket, everybody's pocket they want to go in. Everybody gets a bill. Lady said she was getting a bill from them after the fire. So when they say they don't know how many people are not getting service after the fire, they're full of it because they know. Their computers know, their computers print out everything, they have everybody's addresses, they have everybody's internet numbers, they have everybody's everything. It's a big, big, big company. Like I said, when I started out, there were cable systems all over the country. When we came to Hawaii and we did programming in Hilo and all over, when the cable systems were one little cable system. Now, there were little cable systems on every island, but now, there's one encompassing cable system. So when you go back to Oahu and you sit down and you talk to them, you go, "You know, we got the money from Kauai, maybe they let us roll over them. Maui will not let you roll over them." Thank you very much for listening.
Jordan Hocker. Jordan Hocker. Anne Marie Tota.
Thank you for having a public hearing on this. I'd like to say first that I fully support what Akaku is asking for in terms of this franchise agreement, and I think it's very reasonable. Try to make sure that our asks are reasonable, and keeping a revenue of three percent is more than reasonable, as other people have mentioned. I'd like to stay, tell my story briefly. In COVID, my family was decimated. We both lost our jobs, both me and my partner. We went on to public welfare for the first time in our lives. It altered the course of my life, and one of the things that did that was being able to tune in to local government and use that time to use my duty as a private citizen to be civically engaged. I think you can know by now that was because of Akaku and their coverage. In 2022, while pregnant with this child that I'm holding right here, I ran for county council against a deeply entrenched incumbent whose campaign coffers were more than I could even ever hope to raise. And Akaku gives the chance to every candidate to come and record a PSA, which levels the playing field for grassroots candidates. I am also currently a student at this university, pursuing a degree in sustainable science management, and when I see something that looks to threaten the diversity of our media communications, I'm led back to a quote by the Smithsonian that says that redundancy or diversity within the system makes it more resilient. And if there's anything Maui County needs, particularly in its communications right now, it's to be as resilient as possible. We got beat down hard during COVID, and we got beat down hard after the fires. I've been the programs director for the last two years of the Kula Community Association. We've worked closely with Akaku, particularly for our most recent candidate forum. I don't know where our community would be, and I think that's what you keep hearing again and again and again, is that they're so important to us. I'm a Spectrum customer. When I call and say, "Hey, my bill's too high," they work with me, and I appreciate that in terms of customer loyalty. But Spectrum does enough for me. Akaku fills an entirely different void. And I'll just close to say that I fully support Akaku and their ask in this franchise agreement, but also, please know that I wouldn't be here trying to wrangle my toddler for two hours if this wasn't so important to me and my family. And so I really hope that this isn't a done deal and that you come here and take this into consideration and let us keep Akaku. Thank you.
Thank you. West for Wodoh. No. Sleepy John. Oh, I'm sorry. What's here? Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'm setting up here. I'm a longtime resident of Maui, Keikioka'aina, and I've worked with Akaku for a number of The programming they provide, both on the television side and also on the radio side. They also have a very good radio station that if Akaku... They also have a very good radio station that if Akaku lost their funding, would disappear as well. That's 88.5. Very important to keep that funding current. And what I do, you know, I'm a musician, you know, I play music. And Akaku has always provided a platform for me to do that and be an alternative to whatever kind of commercial things are going on. And I want to just, you know, present this in the form of a song to you. And the song I'm gonna do is called "Pahia Oi." "Pahia Oi" means, you know, what's up, what's happening? And I'm sending that question out to the state of government in Hawaii, to the people of Hawaii. What's going on here? You know? Let's take care of our communities, not some outside entity. So this is "Pahia Oi." I dreamed, I woke up early with my pure and younger self and ran the beach at Poonanu through the breaking foam. I flew on wings of seabirds above the breaking waves, swam into a deeper blue, whakanaloa rain. Na keke o kaaina, na keke o kekai. Na opio o Hawaii, oh ho, pahia oi. I walked into the mountains where ancient spirits dwell and drank of Kani's waters, the deep and endless well. I dreamed, I prayed to Lona and planted seeds of hope into the gardens of the heart and marvelled at their growth. Na keke o kaaina, na keke o kekai. Na opio o Hawaii, oh ho, pahia oi. Where are you going? Who are you now? With the hand of your father and your mother's heart combined? What are you thinking? And how will you live in this time of constant change? Do the best that you can. I followed in the footsteps of those who went before and with the unborn children along the mo'ole spine. Na kopuna, na opio, sharing in their time a woven tale of living, of hand and heart and mind. Na keke o kaaina, na keke o kekai. Na opio o Hawaii, oh ho, pahia oi. That would not be out there if it was not for Akaku. Okay, thank you.
Followed by Gary Louder. Kathy Louder.
Okay. Hello, you guys got me? All right, I'm Sleepy John. I'm a local producer. I make television. I don't, I'm 82. I don't carry a camera in the field anymore. I really depend on the studio at Akaku to do what I do, which is shows featuring, I had Wes on a couple times, local musicians in performance. And without Akaku, none of that happens. Any questions?
Gary Louder? Gary Louder?
Aloha. My name is Gary Louder. Up until very recently, I was the chief engineer, technical director for Visionary Radio Group, which was Koi Radio, which has been taken over by the mainland and is now gonna be run out of Colorado. I would have to say that I'm kind of raw because that was the last commercial radio group that was owned by local. Okay? So they're gonna use AI to give it a local flavor. My feeling about this is that it does not need to be said about what these gentlemen have done for Maui. What needs to be said is, what are you? What is the DCCA? Why, in this country of 50 states, are we the only state that has it? That is a valid question, I would think. I would also ask that your position is to be a fiduciary. Your responsibility is to the people of Maui, not to Spectrum. Spectrum had a monopoly. Time Warner had a monopoly. Okay? That monopoly is over. I ran the biggest studios on the mainland. A&amp;M, Oceanway, Interscope. I know technology. And your technology is eclipsed. Actually, I get my internet through 5G. Now, I really feel strongly that this process is absurd. You cannot have a process that occurred 10 years ago remain valid now. That should be all redone. Every single county should have their say, like today. This should be happening 10 times. And how this happened? How could it happen that something that was for Time Warner-Oceannic is now with Spectrum? It has no say. It is bullshit, I'm sorry to say. These people have committed a fraud. We need to have the process redone. People's minds 10 years ago are not what their minds are now. The interviews and everything that was said 10 years ago is not valid. If you do not redo the process, I have, this is stinking to high heaven. It's like, yeah, you know what? We should all talk to Governor Green. And we should ask for an inspector general to figure out what this mystery internet thing is. I looked up, I'm very, very technical. I can't find what it is. I don't know what it is. But the installation of this network was 10 years ago. Probably digging holes in the ground, laying fiber. This is all obsolete. So the reevaluation for what the costs are for their mystery internet should be audited and redone as well. The entire situation here is absurd. It is not pono. And it should stop. There should be no decisions this month. There should be no decisions at all. Kauai should be reevaluated. I do not understand how this happens. But I heard all day long, everybody in this room, so pono, so giving, so loving. I am not. This is bizarre. I do not understand it, and nobody here can explain it. That's all I have to say. Aloha.
Claire Apana.
Good morning, Claire. Good morning, Claire Apana from Waileku, Maui. I was born in Waileku, Maui, and raised in Waileku and have lived in Hawaii for my life. And many people who've testified are not native-born and are not lifelong residents of this place or have a family history that goes back to before the incursion of Westerners to Hawaii. And I would like to testify and speak in that vein as Kanakamauli of this land. I didn't hear that we gave the state of Hawaii or Spectrum the right to collect these fees, use them this way, and use them essentially against the only place that will really hear our voice and let us have a chance to speak. Recently, I was on the news, in Hawaii News Now and KI-TV. And what was covered was so brief that it was not enough to tell my story. However, in the Hawaii News Now coverage, we thought that was really great because we got on. The governor was able to say and call us small groups of Hawaiian people who were saying, your appointment of Hinata Rodriguez to the Water Commission is wrong. He is not representing us and has too many business interests. He was able to say that we were demonizing him. He called me a demonizer. And he gets away with it on public news. Who will carry my story? Who will carry my story? Let me tell you that my story with public, the public and the public news started quite by accident in 2007 in the Maui Planning Commission, which is covered by Akaku. After testifying there, people came up to me in the public and said, I never knew that they were sand mining the Kanakamauli burials. I never knew that. Thank you for saying something. Thank you for saying something. And this has been ongoing till this day. We are still fighting against the state digging up our burials. Can you believe that? We went to the UN. We got certified from the UN, a motion that said the Maui County is committing genocide by digging up our burials on purpose, giving permits. But who would cover that story? It's been very hard to get any news coverage for us. But Akaku has allowed us to go and be interviewed on private network, private people, producers and their shows. They've allowed us to do PSAs, to tell people of events that we are doing. They've allowed us to testify in public in a way that people can actually hear it. If you follow it only through Maui County, it's very difficult to get the coverage of the meeting. But if we followed it through Akaku on that day, yes, that is possible. And I would like to say that as a Kanakamauli organization, we have been able to work with Akaku and are still working with Akaku to broaden our voice. And yet you would take that away for the piddly amount of money. We know that this is probably not about money. This is probably about control and power. And this is one of the few places that Kanakamauli can have an equal voice. And we support Jay April's letter and what he's asking for and think that you are really not giving enough money to have our voices heard. And we would like to have you ask us, if you can use our mountain tops, if you can use the places where you put your towers and collect money, state of Hawaii, DCCA, can you use our land that way and not let us have a say? Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our online testifiers now. Daniel Emhoff, followed by Dick Mayer. James, Paul James Brown, Arifin Graham, Stacy Alapi, Galen Quinn, Jenna Miller, Paul Carter, Lucine Denae, and Linda Popolo. Go ahead. Who's on?
Hi. Aloha, everybody in the room. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Daniel Emhoff. I am the director of Akaku Molokai, or the Ata of Molokai. As you can see from this very long meeting with many testifiers, that Akaku has worked tirelessly, meaning relevant people and bring value to our community. Something that hasn't been stated enough. Akaku is the most unique public access station in America because we live in the most unique county. We're separated by water, we're three islands. The challenges we face to service our community every single day is monumental. And we're a skeleton crew. I can't even tell you how many projects I've built in the 21 years I've been at Akaku. How many children have come into this office and worked and learned from me? There are, some of them are adults now coming up and shaking my hand and saying hi. I just, I can't even, I still can't even believe that Hawaii's public access is defunded. And here we are talking about asking the DCCA not to defund Maui County. You know, I don't even need to say anything more about how important Akaku is in the community. I think you've heard it enough and you probably hear more. You're actually lucky this is a Monday on a workday. Otherwise, we could be here till next week. The word Akaku, it means, it's a Hawaiian word that means vision, unique vision, and also a mirror because it reflects Maui County's unique vision. And, you know, when the cable companies were federally mandated to give 3% to public access, they just raised their rates 3%. So they're not even taking a hit and they're trying to take away public access funding. So that's another thing that really needs to be considered here. You know, that's about all I have to say. I want to keep it short. And, well, hold on, one more thing. Molokai is extremely rural. I mean, for the kids here, there isn't even a movie theater. There isn't a family fun center. There isn't even a fast food restaurant chain here. We need services like this to keep the kids vibrant and healthy, using their brains and staying away from trouble. I work in schools all the time. I cover school sports. I've covered hundreds of community meetings and county meetings that are local to Molokai. Right now, this is the window into what happens here on Molokai, and this is one of the most important microphones for Molokai to get what's needed out. So please keep that in mind, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Dick Mayer. Dick Mayer, aloha. Arifin Graham.
Aloha. Aloha, Nui. Presiding Officer, Directors Jay from Akaku family and all present. My name is Arifin Graham, and my wife, Wilu, and I live in Victoria, British Columbia, which is where I'm zooming in from today. Therefore, I bring the testimony of someone who loves Maui, even if I'm not of Maui. As some of you may know, there's a deep connection between Victoria and Maui, including the Vic Maui race, and, believe me, Lahaina and Maui are much loved by many people here in my town. Wilu and I have been longtime visitors to Maui as my now-late parents, Pip and Nikki Graham, gratefully owned a house in Lahaina and have watched Akaku '53, '54, and '55 for over three decades to learn about local issues, council meetings, island culture, community and events. Akaku is indeed a treasure of local journalism. David Beers, the highly respected publisher of independent media outlet, the Taiin, in Vancouver, B.C., wrote today, and I quote, "As newsrooms shrink and the web fills with fakery, public interest journalism isn't dying a natural death. Identifiable forces are actively opposed to its principles and practice because what reporters do gets in the way of their power-seeking agendas," end quote. We need, Maui needs, Molokai needs, Lahaina, Lenai needs local community voices now more than ever. And Lahaina needs local community voices now more than ever. As is written on Akaku's website, "We are a beacon of free speech on the best islands in the world where anyone can come and talk story." Akaku is there to inspire the young, to hear from elders, to connect the communities of Maui, Molokai, and Lenai. And indeed, the invaluable work of Akaku will continue to be vital to the recovery of the Maui community and Lahaina and other parts of the Maui community as it gets its motion back and continues to recover, to rebuild, and to heal from the trauma of these past 16 months. A journey that will surely continue step by step for years to come. I'm a photographer and was recently in Maui to appear on Akaku to present portraits of Lahaina residents from before the fire of August 2023 and to interview some of the people I had photographed in 2022 about their experiences and life journeys since the fire. In working with Akaku, I experienced a potent combination of professionalism and community spirit and a deep commitment within that organization to the communities and the people of Maui County. It was heartening and inspiring to see. The Akaku family, Jay, Susan, Kat, Doug, Adam, Lou, Brata Tony Midland, and many others, including those from the community who volunteer for the cause, is an extraordinary team working to connect and empower the people of Maui County. Long live Akaku and its vital mission. Aloha and gratitude from here in British Columbia. Mahalo, Nui, for this opportunity, and best wishes to all in that beautiful, precious place. Thanks.
Stacy Alapi. Go ahead, Stacy.
Aloha. My name is Stacy Alapi. I live in Makawau with my family. And I just heard about this hearing, ironically only from Akaku. I get a lot of emails from Spectrum trying to sell me on their services. Not one email about this hearing regarding their renewal of their contract. I also just Googled while the testifier reporter was talking. Spectrum's stock is at, the value is at over $2.96 billion in revenue. And I want you all to think very deeply about what you are doing. We all like to talk about supporting local businesses, but we are proposing today to defund a beloved, as you've seen today, a beloved local resource to our community in favor of a business that is making billions of dollars on the stock market. What is our measly crumbs of $225,000 to a huge corporation like Spectrum? I don't know why the DCCA or the governor or whoever's in charge of this, why are we even considering this? Has Maui not been through enough? Have we not lost enough? We have to now consider losing Akaku TV? This is a staple of our community. I never even thought that it was a possibility that I could turn on the TV and not have Akaku. I am not a Spectrum subscriber because they were increasing my internet speeds, my internet rates exponentially. So I switched to Huayantel. And my Akaku TV, I could still watch them online. They still give us access to these important meetings. This meeting is streaming live on Akaku TV. Is Spectrum doing that? I don't think so. So why? Why is the DCCA considering robbing our community of our ability to connect through this medium to teach our Kiki how to tell our stories with video and music and all of these different things? We, just a few nights ago, the county council was having a meeting until nine o'clock at night. I have a two-year-old. I couldn't watch this meeting in person. I can only watch it on Akaku TV. And I live closer to where the county building is. What about the people in Molokai or Hana or Lenai? And you're not thinking about our communities when you're making these decisions. All you people see are dollar signs, and I am so sick of it. And if Akaku, if Spectrum thinks that they can make something similar to Akaku TV that just shows how little they know about our community. Building trust in Maui is so difficult. And our communities trust Akaku to tell our stories with dignity and with the full truth, the full story. They give us a place, they give us a platform where no one else does. And you think that Spectrum's gonna come in and be able to build that same level of trust for people to trust them with our vulnerability, with our stories? No way. You're just going to silence our communities, and I'm sick of us, of our government entities and all these acronyms, it's the DCCA today, trying to rob our community and steal our voice and silence us. It's not okay. So I really, please, please, I'm begging you to reconsider this very short-sized decision to divert funding from a local business to a billion-dollar corporation. We need Akaku TV. This proposal is an attack on our free speech. It's an attack on the freedom of the press. You're cutting off our islands from being able to engage in government. And I think that that's part of the reason why this is happening because you don't want us to be involved. You don't want us to be engaged. I go to these meetings and people say, "Young people need to get involved. You need to get involved." And here I am, here we are, trying to get involved in this system, and you're cutting off our resources. You're pulling the plug on Akaku TV where I get all of my information. So I appreciate you holding this public hearing, but the only reason anyone even knows about it is because of Akaku TV. And the DCCA and Spectrum did nothing to let the public know that this was our one and only opportunity to save this public resource. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you. Jenna Miller.
Aloha.
Go ahead.
Aloha and mahalo for the opportunity to test today, all the way from Idaho. My name is Gina Archangela Miller, and I'm a proud local, born and raised in Lahaina. I'm currently working as the video archivist of Akaku and the former host of the Maui Daily. I'm here today with a heavy heart, deeply concerned about the recent actions taken by the DCCA which could have severe consequences for community media in Maui County and across Hawaii. As someone who has worked in local media, I have witnessed firsthand the essential role that public access media like Akaku plays in our communities. Akaku has been an essential resource for Maui County for decades, providing a platform for our voices, our stories, and our history. From covering critical news after the tragic Lahaina wildfire to providing a space for local dialogue, Akaku has connected our community in ways that no other media outlet can. But today, the very existence of Akaku and other public access stations is at risk. The DCCA is proposing to divert a significant portion of franchise fee revenue, funds that were meant to support public access, education, and government programming, away from stations like Akaku and into a state-run internet project with little to no public oversight. This is not just an issue for Akaku. It's a threat to the heart of community media across the state. But what concerns me the most is the lack of transparency and the public input in this process. These decisions are being made behind closed doors without a proper assessment of how they will impact our community. As someone who has been part of this process, I can tell you that the needs of our residents, especially with the rapid pace of technological and social change, are not being adequately considered. If these changes are allowed to continue, Akaku faces serious financial hardship. The critical services that we provide at Akaku, services that give our community and county a voice, are at risk, and we cannot afford to lose this platform. And so that is why I urge the DCCA to commit to continuing to fund Akaku at the agreed-upon 3% of franchise fees throughout the term of the renewal. This funding is vital for us to maintain our independence and ensure that we can continue to offer unbiased, locally-driven programming. And additionally, I ask that Spectrum be required to broadcast Akaku channels in high-definition at no extra charge. This is a basic right for our viewers, and it ensures that we can compete fairly with other networks. And so I ask the DCCA to continue to support Akaku and all that it represents for the people of Maui County. Together, that's together, we can protect the future of local media and ensure that it continues to serve our community for generations to come. Thank you for your time. Mahalo.
Dick Mayer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. There are always two sides to an issue, and I'm gonna try to present both sides. On behalf of Spectrum, I would like to thank the DCCA for conducting only a meeting here on Maui rather than a proper hearing which would require much more formal and appropriate techniques for the DCCA to ask testifiers questions and to probe into the details of an issue. Thank goodness Spectrum is not being required to go through a hearing process as Oceanic Time Warner had to do in 2013 on all of the islands. We also would like to thank DCCA for making sure that we were not required to post on your website our application for franchise renewal as was done in 2013 when Oceanic Time Warner made the most recent application for a Maui franchise renewal. This has saved us considerable amount of money and has allowed us to hide our financial details and obligations from the public. Mahalo. Spectrum is also thankful that DCCA has not interfered with our ability to constantly raise the rates that we charge to our Maui customers. We have been able to make large profits and it's been done without the interference of DCCA. Furthermore, because of Spectrum's considerable profits, we are able to help the state political leaders in their campaigns. So you see, we not only serve Maui residents, but also the political leadership of Hawaii. Mahalo. Spectrum appreciates that the DCCA has not called the franchise license renewal to the attention of the public. The only way that the public has heard about this meeting today is because of the nasty efforts by Akaku to let the people of Maui know what is going on. Without meeting publicly, we would not have been able, without meeting publicly, without meeting publicity, we would have been unable to get by this without allowing the people of Maui to even know that we were asking for this long-term, very profitable franchise renewal. And now for the other side. My name is Dick Mayer. I taught economics for 34 years here at the University of Hawaii Maui College, and I'm now retired, and now I'm a retired professor of merits. I also was the coordinator for the alliance of all of the Maui community associations for many, many years. Spectrum has been overcharging Maui residents for a long time. There seems to be no control or regulation of their gouging of Maui families. They do not deserve a license extension. Spectrum rates have effectively stolen money from Maui residents for many years. Maui County is very different from Honolulu and the other counties. Akaku needs to serve the public on three islands. Honolulu has many TV stations and a daily newspaper to provide information. There is no daily newspaper on Maui, nor is there a TV station here other than the Akaku broadcasts. We need Akaku's reporting of Maui County government's activities and actions and reporting on their community events here in the county. Spectrum has done everything it can to thwart Akaku by only allowing channels at one level. They should be required to have Akaku not only on '53 through '55, but also on '153 to '155 and '1053 to '1055. That is not happening now. It has not. Spectrum has acted in a most abusive manner by not allowing high-definition, which Akaku is required, is equipped to provide. If the DCCA is unwilling to protect Maui residents, we should seek to have its funding reduced or removed entirely due to malfeasance and disregard other obligations to serve the needs of Hawaii. Or perhaps even better, because the cable company is a utility, the whole approval of their franchise should be transferred to the state's Public Utilities Commission, which does conduct hearings and would be able to do it more properly. Spectrum's reapplication--
Sir, I want to ask you to summarize, please.
Okay, I got two more sentences. Spectrum's reapplication for an extension of its license should be rejected rather than giving it the ability to steal even more money from Maui. I request a proper hearing on Maui's islands and a posting as Spectrum's renewal franchise application. Otherwise, all the testimony today was in vain because we do not even know what their application is. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going down the names again. Paul James Brown, Paul Carter, Lucine Denai, Linda Popolo, Lisa Darcy, Peter DeLong, Kelly King, Thomas Crowley, Leonard Nakoa, and Sam Smol.
Lucine Denai, they just asked me to activate my microphone. Wow.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, first of all, we're very grateful that you folks have come. But really, as folks have said, we really need a full discussion of what the current contract is going to be. I'm involved in the community in many different hats, but today I'm speaking on behalf of the Haiku Community Association as its president. You know, Akaku is our lifeline for our rural community, so we depend upon them. When we have a meeting, we either film it and turn it into Akaku to let people see what went on, or they come and set up and film it for us and broadcast it. Unfortunately, I only wish that the promises made by the cable company of providing internet to our community centers was true. There's no way we can broadcast anything livestream from our local community center, or I don't know really any of the community centers on Maui that have that capability because-- because the Spectrum coverage is so low bandwidth. You just don't have the ability to take your message beyond that building. And so maybe they're providing some sort of service, but it's not a service that actually is effective. You know, our community is the Boys and Girls Club, it's the Haiku School, it's our local churches, and we all depend on Akaku to get the word out about what we're doing. Just like the rural communities in Hana and Molokai and Wunai, it's like our lifeline is Akaku. It is our local news, it is the place where we speak to each other. So I fully support what has been said by Jay April, by Senator McElvy. This whole idea of taking away money from Akaku and not going, even the small amount that has been, is due and really well-used and well-actualized in our community, the 3%, we need to stick with that 3%, there should be no reduction in the funding. And we really need to get the high-definition service at no cost. It's what the industry standard is now, and everybody really should be helping the public by providing that. Also, I agree with those who say we need the updated agreement. I attended that meeting in 2013 too, and that was 10 years ago. It's like we're living in a different world now. So please, thank you for listening to the voices of our community. You can see how essential a service Akaku has, no matter what our community project or organization is. They're just helping everybody, and they are part of the essential services of our community. So please listen and do what they ask. Aloha.
Linda Papolo?
Papolo.
Papolo, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Linda Papolo. I'm the executive director of the Maui AIDS Foundation. However, today I'm acting as a private citizen representing myself in this testimony. But as a ED of the Maui AIDS Foundation, I just want to thank Akaku for all the training that you've given my employees. This franchise renewal has been on the table for 15 years and problems never solved. So much has changed since then, and I'm requesting that the DCCA shut down this renewal for the research clarification and work. I'm with Cat Tracy on that. When Spectrum sat down and addressed the crowd, it shows you the adversarial relationship right from the get-go because they said they were happy to see you here, but that they didn't say they were happy to see the testifiers. They didn't say anything to us. And if that seems odd that I asked for that, it's a matter of respect when you're working with the public. In 2013, DCCA Director Kaila E. Lopez received the following recommendations, which hold true, from former Olelo ED Roy Almamia. And to my knowledge, these recommendations have never been addressed. To advocate rigorously for Maui County citizens, to negotiate appropriate resources, both financially and in terms of dedicated channel Spectrum, so that the community voice can continue to thrive. Think about that, the community voice can continue to thrive, which is the theme of today. Ensure that the video-on-demand opportunities for community program is facilitated and supported by then-Oceanic Time Warner, now Spectrum, as an additional viewing option and not in place of a lower-tier channel time. Ensure access channels are available in the exact manner as the local affiliate channels and at the same quality level, and that would actually be fair and equal access. It's really difficult to watch that lower channel. It makes the meetings difficult and not anything anybody would like to watch for any pleasure whatsoever. Formalize a process for PEG expansion into the future forms of distribution that may not be known at this time, including advanced internet applications and other future technologies. In other words, let's work together. I don't know why, for all these years, I worked at Akaku in 2005, and I have never understood why the relationship always has to be adversarial. I do not get it. We're, you know, we can be part of the pie, they can work with us. There's a great advantage to having the community behind an access company. I don't understand at all. I want to add that the financial climate of Maui County has significantly changed with the limited recovery from COVID-19 pandemic and the destruction from the Maui wildfires. It is simply not possible for any nonprofit to fundraise right now on Maui or in Maui County. Any fundraising that we do directly impacts the help that we can give to victims. This county needs help to keep services in place, all services. We need to get our word out there that all nonprofits are valuable and the services that we do, and we can do that for free on the Akaku. What we don't need is an opportunistic rating of the limited funding available at a time when the people of Maui County are struggling. I don't know if you know this, but Akaku was named by Kaila E. Rochelle, and he named it to be vision as if in a mirror. And it was established to give this voice, this community, its voice. We need that voice now more than ever. I readily admit that I do not understand what you are doing with this proposal. I am one of the people that pay attention, and I don't--
Let me summarize, please.
Yes, sir. Any reduction in service right now is just cool. Shut this thing down, let's get together, let's sit down and get this sham show of pretend transparency out of the way. And can't we just work together from now on? And I want to say, the last thing I want to say is, Academy Award nominee Destin Daniel Cretin, who is a very well-known filmmaker now, showed his first show, his very first movie at Akaku called Dracmar, A Knight's Jerk Tale or something like that. We have seen great progress with the kids in the community. Please don't take that away from the community. Think about it. The theme is to work together, and then maybe you won't have a thousand people testifying against you. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Darcy?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Darcy. It's actually after 8:00 PM on the East Coast, and I've been sitting here waiting patiently since 20 minutes before the meeting. I'm grateful to be here. Thank you so much for hosting this. I'm gonna jump around a little bit because I don't want to repeat everything that has already been said. I am the founder of Share Your Mana, which is a nonprofit on Maui, which assists people who are living unhoused and unsheltered. They have very little technology or access to electricity or forget broadband and any of these other things that are spoken about, which I have to say, in the opening remarks by the presenter from Spectrum was, I found it offensive and the way that they glossed over as if people, as if this is just a rosy, easy road for the people of Maui County. It is not. I have to say, I'm thrilled that you've poked the bear because the bear is awake right now, and the bear had already started to hibernate, but now we're up. And everything that has been said today is critical. There has not been, how many hours of testimony have we had? We have not had one testifier in support of this. I'm hoping this isn't a done deal. I've been through decades of testimony, and I can usually tell when it's a done deal. And I'm surmising that this may have already been a done deal, and this is just for show to have the community be able to testify today. If that is the case, I will certainly be on the team that activates after this. Again, I'm in opposition to what is proposed, and not only am I in opposition, I actually believe Akaku should have double, triple, quadruple the funding. The amount of work they do on shoestring budgets and the amount of people. We will never know how many lives they have saved, how much emergency services they have protected because it is such a rural community and people in poverty, they absolutely rely on this mechanism to get their information. There are people that are glued to Akaku. And I have to tell you, if you cut them off, we will suffer even more deeply. This is a crisis. This is not something that should be taken as just okay today. Especially in light of the fires and how that has happened. Please, I don't even want to say please, I don't want to have to beg. No one here should have to beg for this basic community service. This needs protection, it needs elevation. It has brought so many people who have no access to information, safety. I work with people in the field every single day that if I didn't have Akaku to rely on, they would be in harm's way. And like I said, I really hope that this testimony is going to be useful and it is not going to be shelved. This community is speaking so loudly that I hope it reverberates across the country and even more so. And we need to go help protect Hawaii if this is what's the threat. I'm gonna conclude with knowing that Chris Winfrey, apparently he's the CEO, right, of the Charter Communications, which is kind of the owner of all of this, he got compensation of $89 million last year. Some of us don't even get, even, $89 million!
You'll have to summarize, please.
What I'm gonna summarize is, I think you, is that this is an atrocity. And you poke the bear. Dude, please do not poke, please help the bear go back to sleep. Give the bear a nice comfy, warm place to sleep and make sure that the message gets passed on that not only should Akaku receive more funding, but I almost feel like, I almost feel like I need an apology to have to be here and spend my entire, all this time for a basic community function. Mahalo.
Kelly King? Kelly King?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for this meeting, and I want to start out, I'll introduce myself first. I have been a former council member for three terms. I'm a former member of the Board of Education representing Maui back in the 90s when it was an elective position. I was also a former board member of Akaku in the past, and I've been on the advisory committee for UHMC for the Sustainable Sciences Management Program that you and Jordan talked about earlier. And so my life, that's about a third of my professional life, and that's the third that was heavily concerned with the services that Akaku gives this community. So I'm here in support of everything you've heard mentioned earlier. So I'm not gonna go through all the specifics except that to say that I support everything they're asking for as far as funding. I think Akaku deserves more funding, not less funding, and more support. It's been an incredible part of our community. And I want to thank you too, Dean, for hearing out our testifiers because I just came from a meeting last week of some of my former colleagues on the council who cut the testifying time because it was obvious they had already made up their minds. So I'm hoping that you haven't done that, and I'm hoping that you're actually here to understand with how valuable Akaku services are to this community. I think, like Lisa just said, I haven't heard one person that was against Akaku and didn't think it was a valuable part of our community. But I also want to, I want to say, I just want to share with you some of my, from my perspective as a former public official, elected official, and somebody who worked at the college and for the State Board of Education, is that these services are so important, and you heard it mentioned earlier about our tri-isle configuration. So if you, you know, I know this as a neighbor-island member on the State Board of Education, how affected our community was by being a neighbor-island. And I had to get them to try to stop calling us the outer island since I said at one meeting over there, you know, you sound like you think everything revolves around Oahu. And the answer I got back was, well, doesn't it? So, you know, this is how we feel. And the unfortunate thing about the state of Hawaii and especially the county of Maui is that we have a hard time holding our public officials accountable. And sometimes the only way to do that is to sue. And that's why there's so many lawsuits in Maui County. Because you can't get, even if you're on the council and we pass a policy, there's nothing that gives us the authority to make sure that the administration calls through those policies and implements the actual budget items that we pass. So that's one of the places that we're coming from, our community is coming from. Is that how do we protect ourselves and get your agency to do what it's supposed to do? Or any agency for that matter. We, to a large extent, and I don't think anyone's mentioned this, but to a large extent, we've been watching on the national level and the state level people losing their freedoms left and right, and this last election was really scary. So we're looking at a, we're looking at a future where we're gonna have to fight for every freedom we have, every scrap that we have, every service that we have for our kids, for our next generation. I'm a mother and I'm a grandmother, but because I've been on the State Board of Education, I feel like, you know, I really feel that way about all children in the state of Hawaii, that we have to look out for their future. So Akaku is such a, you heard what an inherent part of our community has become and how it's almost part of the education system over here. And I see that from somebody who sat on the board when it was a really volatile time, and I recognize that volatility came from the passion that everybody has for this organization. So I'd like to mahalo all the people who came out and testified because I was planning to get on and hopefully testify and then exit, but it's been such a beautiful thing watching our community come out and support. And we've heard from professionals, we've heard from Kahuna, we've heard from teachers and students and people who were broadcasters, people who were performers, people who are community members from all over this county. It's just been really impressive and heartfelt. I was kind of thinking somebody should take that and make a movie out of this testimony itself because it's just been really special. But I hope it also impresses upon the DCCA how important this is to our community. And I don't think, if the decision is a done deal, I don't think that's gonna sit well, and I don't want to see this, I don't want to see this community have to go through another lawsuit. So please take into consideration all of the testimony and the fact that if you did come here to find out how the community feels so you could incorporate that into your decision, you now know how our community feels about Akaku, and we appreciate the heck out of it. Everybody who's been a public official, everybody who's run for office and maybe didn't win and got a chance because of Akaku, everybody who's tried to have a voice and didn't have one without Akaku because you can't get yourself on the news if you don't have a certain stature or you're not patting someone's pockets. This is what this organization needs to us. So, you know, thank you to, thank you, everybody in that room. I wish I had been there. I had my schedule changed, so I couldn't be there in person, but just watching everybody that I know around this community. You have seen from our community today the best of the best. The best people came out in support of Akaku. So thank you for listening, thank you for still being here, and for also affording people time. I didn't, I never heard you, I know I heard you say, could you wrap it up? But I never heard you say, you have two seconds left, which is what I hear on the council all the time. And so I just want to really speak that. I'm gonna wrap it up and thank you and thank all of my community for coming out today.
Leonard Nakoa?
Yes, sir. How you doing, bruh?
All right.
Mahalo.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm ready. Yes, sir. Okay, bruh. Yeah, from Lahaina. Went through this thing with this fire from day one. Been underground fighting for my people in Lahaina, still fighting for my people in Lahaina. I try to be the voice of Lahaina, and Akaku helped me out with that big time, okay? Doing all the stuff that we was going through here in Lahaina. Yeah, when everybody was all mentally stressed out and suffering, okay? Akaku, when you get these young, young, up-and-coming, the video guy guys, the camera guy guys that are like Maddy Schweitzer, Blake Damm that are, they, they will come and video some stuff about what was really going on when the government wasn't here and when the people of Maui were doing everything, yeah? For at least one month. So mahalo Akaku, mahalo for doing what you guys do. For educating, plan me, I coach-- For educating, let me, I coached baseball thirty years and, and Kanu. And I see, so I hear about kids going to A'Kaku, learning how, how to make these video kind stuff. Yeah, so it's awesome. Yeah, and then you're planning all the things, you know, like, okay, yeah, testify like a bastard every time. I grumble, I can grumble, okay? And a lot of the people who I grumble for cannot make these meetings because they work. But they get the opportunity, thanks to A'Kaku for coming on top after I'm walking off. So, yeah, Spectrum, oh my God, you don't know how long my story is gonna be over here. And all the other kind of words I gotta use that I don't can use right now, yeah? Uh, but, um, they only, they only make us suffer. Then I'll do nothing during the fires, during us guys was going. Yeah, then I will do nothing, then I will supply with nothing. Spectrum, ha, we're repeating the lines. Yeah, but I'm gonna tell you, then I'll do nothing. So please don't take away this entity that helps us and help me keep doing what I've been doing for how many years, testifying at all the council meetings. And now I get some young, up and coming, uh, young leaders that step right in my shoes, which is good. So, uh, the DCCA, remember you guys is for us, the people, not for Spectrum. The Spectrum guys, they, they don't stay here. Yeah, then, so they're not here for us. Okay, so take care of us at DCCA. But like Lisa Darcy said about poking the bear, I want guy, you know, like poke. Yeah, because I will organize and mobilize. That's what I had to do today, was organize and mobilize one meeting in Kihei for educate people about these other projects in Oahu area. And yeah, so, Chiwa, call me up. Yeah, call me up. Seven nine six six four two one. But yeah, so, hey, DCCA guy, um, yeah, please don't take this away from us. And like everybody, like Kelly King said, Lisa Darcy said, but these buggers need more money. Yeah, with this money that they get, look at the magic they already do for us. Say, you want a little money? Oh, yeah, they're gonna show Spectrum how it's done. Okay, yeah, but mahalo, you don't need to copy it. Yes, sir, mahalo.
Okay, mahalo. Sam Small? Sam Small? Can you unmute yourself?
There we go.
There you go.
Thanks.
Yep.
Better?
Go ahead, yep, go ahead.
Hey, you think, you know, since I started editing videotape in nineteen seventy-eight, you think I'd be a little bit better with the technology? But it, very happy to be able to call in. And, you know, Kelly King is right. You know, the people that have appeared today, this is a who's who of Maui's activists. These people understand and care. And A'Kaku is a fantastic conduit for us getting our voices heard. I've been a show producer at A'Kaku. I've got over a hundred hours of live interviews with many of these community activists. Many issues that don't get spoken about anywhere else other than on A'Kaku. And so it is a vital resource to this community. The talent, the creative talent, the young people learning the skills is a tremendous value. The, our ability to have a place to come together and work as a community and network with one another to make things happen. And the messaging that we're able to get out on the air to the community is absolutely vital. It is a fascist move that A'Kaku is distributed in standard definition. High definition is an absolute right and a must for this community. And it is extremely telling to, to, to see that standard definition is throttling our message. That is by design, and I tell you, that is fascism. And it must be stopped. You know, cable access, cable operators around the country pay five percent and in some places up to seven percent. A two thousand nineteen survey by the Oregon Cities revealed that the average telecommunications franchise fee rate was five point six percent. Why are we dealing with three percent? Are you kidding me? Those are our right of ways. Those are our streets, those are our sidewalks. And we have every right to have what we're entitled to. And so, you know, this entire initiative is insane. Maui needs A'Kaku. And we need the DCCA to approve, forget three percent, five percent. Do it now. Thank you.
Albert Perez. Albert?
Yes, aloha.
Aloha. Go ahead.
Hear me? Yeah.
Yeah, um, thank you. I just found out about this, I think yesterday. I'll try to be brief and I just want to say I agree with...
Albert, one second, you don't have your video on? You don't have a video?
I do. Got better?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, um, I agree with everything that's been said. I just want to go into something else, but before I do, I just want to point out that people, that our community is very diverse and we don't agree on everything. But we all agree that A'Kaku is the heart of Maui's public discourse. And this is a threat to our heart. That's why you see all these people come out on short notice. But I want to speak to something, I mean, it's hard to find things online, but I was looking at this, I guess it's their evaluation by DCCA of the Spectrum application for an extension. And I'm just reading from this line that says, "DCCA concludes that Spectrum has generally provided satisfactory customer service to subscribers." Well, I think that's true for some people, but I'm here to tell you that their customer service is not satisfactory. Every time the power goes out, you know, I'm relying on maybe half the internet. So I fire up my generator, power up to internet, Spectrum is down too. Two hours later, two hours later, I'll get a text from them that says, hey, our internet is out. This is a safety issue. Even with my generator, I can't get any news about emergency situations because the cell phones don't, also don't work up here. And I'm in Kula. When Spectrum first started, it undercut Hawaiian Tel. And then after they got our business, they started raising rates above what Hawaiian Tel had been charging. My friend in California, they were doing business there as Charter Communications. He warned me about their predatory pricing strategy and their terrible customer service. So I wasn't exactly surprised, but I was disappointed. Also, when I call Spectrum customer service, I'm frequently switched to another line and they say that the call dropped, just like almost, almost every time. I have two lines coming onto my property, I only need one. I have called Spectrum twice. They said someone would call me back about removing that other cable line. And I have never heard back from them. And yeah, they're using our public right of way to make money. They need to pay us rent in exchange for that. Why are we charging so much less than they are across the country? Anyway, I just wanted to ask you to step on the brakes. We need A'Kaku in Maui County. Please fully fund A'Kaku and consider increasing at least the average rate in the US. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else online wishing to testify? Any also online? Can we have two people online that need to accept the invitation if they want to testify online? Hey, Nathan Bosler. Nathan?
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to begin my commute. I apologize, I planned to be at my desk, I was waiting around. So, hello, my name is Nathan Bosler, I'm joining you today from Issaquah, Washington. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of A'Kaku Community TV, an organization that does provide incredible value to Maui's residents and beyond. A'Kaku is more than just a television station. It's a cornerstone of the community. It delivers unbiased information, news, and education that empowers individuals and connects residents. In a time when media bias and misinformation are growing concerns, A'Kaku remains a source trusted that informs, educates, and unites people. One of the standout aspects of A'Kaku and the education it provides is yet it's challenging to find quality instruction in audio and video production. I'm a video producer and own a video company. And yet, A'Kaku offers the tools and the training that people need to develop these essential skills today. Today, basic knowledge of video production is not just a luxury, it's a necessity for participating in the workforce. And A'Kaku gives community members an opportunity to learn and foster these skills, creating, paving the pathways in career in media. Reducing their resources would be a major setback, not only for Maui, A'Kaku, but for individuals who depend on A'Kaku to reach their potential. Despite their immense value, A'Kaku operates under significant funding constraints. As someone else mentioned on the call today too, a majority of the access stations, especially over in New England, receive a full five percent of franchise fees. And A'Kaku is only receiving three percent of franchise fees. This discrepancy hinders their ability to expand their services and meet the growing needs of their community. Furthermore, A'Kaku is restricted in broadcasting in standard definition. Even though A'Kaku produces in high definition and they are told it would cost more to upgrade it to HD transmission, that disparity is not fair, especially for this station that already operates on limited resources. And it's important to note too that everything A'Kaku is currently producing is in high definition and all of their equipment that they own and broadcast on is HD equipment and capable simply of the flick of a switch to broadcast in HD. Additionally, A'Kaku should be equipped to meet ADA requirements, which is a major issue across our nation, including closed captioning, secondary audio channels, to ensure programming is accessible to meet all members of the community. Accessibility is not just a requirement, it's a fundamental part of serving the public. It's also important to highlight that A'Kaku has received numerous awards from across the country for its outstanding quality of programming and what they've been able to achieve. Budget is amazing. Many other public stations, access stations across the nation point to A'Kaku as an example of what public access should look like. And this is no small, small feat and speaks volumes to their ability to create meaningful impactful programming under challenging circumstances. As the president of a corporation myself, I understand the importance of budgets and making every dollar count. But sometimes it's essential to look beyond the dollars and cents and see the value that's right in front of you. A'Kaku is not just about numbers, it's about helping people, providing opportunities, and creating a connected and better informed community. And A'Kaku does all this. I'd also like to emphasize the far reaching impact of A'Kaku. Many people, including myself, tune into the Maui Stream Channel online, which they perform above and beyond the cable channel to get the latest and greatest news about what Maui is doing. I personally visited the facility and was blown away by the talent and passionate team and the incredible work that they do. Friends and visitors from all across the country have told me how much they rely on A'Kaku's daily broadcasts, not just while in the island, but also when they return home. A'Kaku does not just serve Maui, it serves thousands of supporters nationwide who value its connection to the island's culture and community. In closing, A'Kaku is more than just a channel. It's a lifeline, an educational hub, and a gathering place for community. It has a profound impact on Maui and beyond, and its value cannot be overstated. I urge you to continue funding A'Kaku Community TV at the levels it deserves, ensuring it has the resources and tools to serve Maui and its people effectively. Please, DCCA, do not defund A'Kaku.
Thank you.
There are, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mike Moran.
Aloha.
Aloha.
My name is Mike.
Go ahead.
I'm, I am the immediate past president of the Kia Community Association. I've lost track, honestly, I was the president for about fifteen years. And our association is a all volunteer, unfunded, nonprofit community association. And over the years, A'Kaku was an immense, continued to be an immense help to our association. And I can state that I'm probably the least technical savvy person that, that's spoken today. And yet, when I went to A'Kaku to do public service announcements, the community would tell me, boy, you're, you're really good at this. Only because the professionals there made me look good so we could clearly get our message out to our community. This is just one of probably hundreds and hundreds of nonprofits who have continuously been helped by this association. And I saw many of the people that, over the years, that were supportive of us. So we, we in turn have to support them. It's like, it's a win-win. I'll just wrap up by saying what I heard and other people have mentioned today. If I may be the last testifier, everyone in the community has come out and said, this is what we want, we want support for A'Kaku. And that concept of you're being brought into a, a position where, okay, let's discuss this. We'll either let you gain nothing or we'll take something away. We don't want to offer you anything positive. So yeah, let's at least keep that three percent and consider paying more, especially what knowledge of people have expressed, that this is commonplace in other areas. So again, I know you've had a long day, I'll wrap up. But thank you for the opportunity and please help us, help our community, support our community access, access with A'Kaku. Mahalo.
Mahalo, thank you. That's all the online testifiers, we have two late registered in person testifiers, Ante Taz. Okay.
Aloha.
Aloha.
Hi, my name is Ante Taz, and let her know by all around A'Kaku. So happy and grateful for the opportunity to be here. I didn't catch your name, but I've been watching you the whole time. And even you sitting in here as people tell their stories, you have a story that's unfolding in front of me. And what I love about A'Kaku is all of us, we have different purposes in life. We have different gifts, right? Ways that we spend our time, ways that we invest in one another, ways that we show up in gratitude, right? And we give attitude from time to time, right, about different things. But A'Kaku is a place where we can all come together in our best energy and everything else. When we're scared, you know, when we need support, when we want to support someone else. Stories, culture, these are the things that connect us. As I look around here, all of us look completely different. We're representing different ages, different income brackets, different professions. I mean, Sleepy John was up here earlier, he's like eighty plus years old, eighty-two. Where in the world can you go and get the opportunity to work with someone and help them to reach their goals? I happen to be an A'Kaku producer. I'm behind the scenes a lot. I support a lot of the different shows that come up. Samar, award winning, Sleepy John in Maui After Dark, that got awards. Kavika Hope, he's the one who's doing Moku Moku. I had the opportunity to be in front of the camera and interview him. I've had the opportunity to work on elections behind the scene, whether it's hair and makeup or, you know, doing all the things that I can't believe with the amount of people that A'Kaku has in terms of those that are paid staff, what they're able to accomplish. And you know... And you know, I just wanna bring attention, attitude reflects leadership, right? Our leader, right, at Akaku, Jay, can be, he's so humble, he's got a great head of hair, right? Who, you gotta be able to love someone with a great head of hair. I got the opportunity to meet your mom, you know, I've been on Maui since two thousand eight, I was a cruise line worker, you know, um, right before the stock market crashed, we all know what happened, the cruise industry, that industry shrunk, loss of jobs, loss of jobs affects economy, right? What happens, you know, when real estate bubbles, I've seen all these things that I was able to get information about from Akaku, but also been able to go to Akaku to give myself something positive to be a part of. There are so many skills that have been learned, you know, behind the scenes, that are marketable. When people have marketable skills, they can do things to earn, and when they can do things to earn, they can do things to invest. And so the three percent, it sounds like, as I'm listening to all the testimonies that it's coming across, it's kinda like a burden, but I kinda see it as an investment, an investment in the productivity of the Ina, of the people that live here. The more productive we are, the more that we can contribute back and create this beautiful, like, fabric of aloha that we all thrive off of, even when sometimes we pull more from it than we give to it. So three percent, I, I'm super nervous right now, cuz, I mean, I've never done anything like this, but I can tell you, every person that works at Akaku, they have a story, they show up, they do their best, some of these people come from very high places to lend their gifts. And as a producer, when we work so hard with the help of all the people, and, you know, trying to get our stories written, and it looks great when we're recording it, and then when we see it on Akaku, and it's very dusty, you know, do you remember that old show, you know, Married with Children, where, or, or one of those Archie and Bunker, you know, the, the quality is so low, so I am asking, just as not only a person that's part of, um, the community, but that person that wants to be a part of the solution, if we could view this as not like a dichotomy, or, I'm sorry, either or situation, why can't it be and instead of either or? Why can't it be the three percent and? Spectrum feels, gets a win-win. It is a possibility to create a win-win situation and not a win-lose situation. So I wanna thank you, I got to see you smile when I came up, that's awesome, and I know you're under pressure, you're, you know, everybody here is taking on energy, I just wanna like send you all the aloha I can muster in this moment, and say thank you to everybody who came out, it is really cool to be able to look on the screen and actually know and have spoken to people that are in TV land, like, these are real people with real stories, and I would just encourage you to stay connected. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Don James.
Hi, uh, my name is Don James, uh, that's my legal voting name, long-term Maui resident, and, uh, I also go by the name of Adam Lightplay and work for Akaku. And I was hoping to get up earlier, cuz I really wanted to apologize, because I was the guy making all the noise at the beginning, during the very beginning of the presentation, and I'm sorry about that, the reason for that is we had several curveballs thrown at us at the last minute, and that's what we do. One of the things we do, you heard from the community producers, you heard from the politicians, you heard from the, the nonprofits, all the different things we do. Another thing we do is roll in at the last second and cover meetings, and when there was the fires in Lahaina, we were doing the news, uh, three or four hours constantly live, uh, on the channel, but also, uh, the mayor wanted to have a press conference almost every day, so we would roll out to press conferences, we would bring one camera, or we'd bring a whole switching unit like we have today, that's one of the things we do at Akaku, and we're very proud of it, I'm proud to be associated with it, and so, um, I'm, I'm glad, thank you for staying here for so long, I, I admire your perseverance, I admire, I admire your bladder size, actually, to be able to, to stick with this, so thank you for sticking with us here. And I, um, I just wanted to say, I, you know, we, we, we've all like tried to find out about this institutional network, can't find out a lot of details. Uh, I'm not against greater communication between our government services, uh, I think if the police and the fire and the people closing the roads and the people in charge of the sirens had all had some sort of wireless network where they could stay in touch with each other, uh, and have better communication, something with battery backup and wireless, I don't know if that's your area or not, but that would certainly be a value, and that's worth millions and millions of dollars, and I'm sure there's state funds and federal funds to cover that, and there's no reason to take a little, you know, we have a microscopic budget here, and to take ten or twenty percent of that for it is, is ridiculous, but to, you know, I'm, we're not against the idea of better communication, that's what we're in, we're into the citizen communication. So, again, thank you for your time, uh, next time you come back, hopefully we'll have a real contract, so we'll know what we're actually talking about, but thank you for, uh, for coming for this, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe that completes the public testimony for the meeting. Um, again, I wanna remind everyone online and public that you are still able to provide written testimony to D C C A, um, by December eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. Um, if not, thank you for coming to this meeting, uh, on Spectrum Oceanics Application for renewal of its cable television franchise in Maui County. I wanna thank everybody for their testimony and sharing their comments with us today, we will take it back with us, and again, thank you very much, this meeting is, um-
Thank you.
Thank you. Concluded.